All right, we're gonna get the meeting started. It is six o'clock, so I'm gonna call this meeting to order. My name is Victoria Parisi and I am here as the vice chair. Tom Gothier is out of town today, so I'll be sitting in his place. First up, we have a public comment. Anyone like from the public like to speak? So seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I will read through the items and if there's anything that the two of you would like to pull, let me know. The first is the August seventeenth, twenty twenty-two draft minutes. Number two is the August eighteenth, twenty twenty-two draft minutes. Three is June twenty-two treasurer's report. Four is July twenty-two treasurer's report. Five is the Clark Wilkins organizational chart. Six is the AMS organizational chart. Seven is the August facilities chart. You guys are still listening, right? Okay, number eight is the Clark Wilkins September principals report. Do you wanna pull that one?
We don't need to pull it. I just wanted to, we can discuss it after the motion is made.
Sounds good. And nine is the AMS September principals report.
Same thing.
Okay, great. Let's start with the Clark Wilkins report, Josh.
Yeah, so first of all, I wanna thank both of you for smooth openings. Seeing, we've been talking about seeing faces in the building. It's been great. Open houses have been awesome. And I feel like there's a really positive energy around all these events. So I do wanna ask you both how your open houses have gone so far and what you've been seeing. So I'll just, I'll throw it out there and you can both take a turn.
Let's try this. Oh, there we go. Clark Wilkins held an open house last night for Wilkins students, grades one through four. We had great attendance. It was a wonderful evening. Teachers and parents and grandparents and family members abound in the building for about two hours straight. Parking was down the street. And we were just so excited to welcome families in to the school and they were so excited to share the school with their families. So that was really successful. At the beginning of the year at Clark School, we held an orientation day for all kindergarten families. So parents there were able to come in, meet teachers, see the school the day before school started. And we will do an evening open house for those families in October, on October thirteenth. So we'll have a second open house for kindergarten families at that point in time.
Working on some microphone. I apologize for that.
Yeah, so our AMS open house events went really well. We had, I would say, a record number of people show up to our fifth and sixth grade night, which was wonderful. Many of our fifth and sixth grade parents were new to school or hadn't actually had an opportunity to come into the school in the past years. So that was record breaking. I would say our whole cafeteria was filled to the brim. We started both nights, both our fifth and sixth and our seventh and eighth nights with introductions of the lower school and the upper school teams. And then also just sort of introduction and some quick points we wanted to share with parents regarding some of the things we had done with kids on the opening days of school. Some of the announcements we had made and things we had set in place. So we did that. And then teachers had an opportunity to go meet their students' teachers, both their core teachers and then also the integrated arts teachers throughout that time. So I think it was a really well-attended event and we're really excited to be back in person. I think the, making those connections between students. Our fifth grade students attended, students, parents and staff was really vital and something we missed during pandemic times.
Jason, can you turn on a microphone?
Turns out I can. So just Clark Wilkins. I just, you know, reading your report, the one thing that stands out, well, several things stand out, but the one thing I wanna highlight that I think is really important and I think is great. And I know this was taking place at AMS before. I don't know if it still is. Is the teacher leadership team and having, I think it really helps build culture and helps build everybody together. I think that's really important. So I just, I think it's important also that the public realize that, right, that our teachers are involved in the decisions that are being made in the whole building. And it's a team effort and that everybody's on voice. I just wanna thank you for that and thank you both for all the hard work and the open houses and all the late nights. And this is being another one for you. So thank you for everything that you're doing. I know being an educational leader is not always the easiest. So thank you for doing it.
So one thing that I wanted to highlight on the AMS report is the flooding. I know that we've, we've really tried to highlight the positives that come from flooding and situations like that. And you did a wonderful job with that, but I also wanna make sure that the community knows that from a financial planning standpoint. The roof is something that has been included in the capital needs assessment and has been part of our savings plan through the expendable trust fund. And, you know, as always, thank you to our staff and everybody who's over there going through a facility issue. And everybody at Clark Wilkins who goes through those things in the past couple of years too. And I know this has probably been discussed in other arenas, but just to be clear. The flooding that we had over Labor Day weekend was caused by a unit ventilator. And then we came back to a rainy week and that's where we had roof leaking and ceiling tile. So two separate issues for us, two different types of water events. I just wanna make that very clear. Thank you. Okay, with nothing else for the consent agenda, just one of you wanna make a motion to approve it?
Get the mic first. I will make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second the motion.
Great. All those in favor? Three, and Terry is still not online, correct? So we'll move on to subcommittee reports. I'm looking over at both of you. I've got, I have a list of different subcommittees on my computer. But if either of you wants to jump in first, feel free.
Sure, I'll take the three that I have updates on. Policy we'll get to shortly, so I won't bother updating that. Right now, we will have our next meeting October sixth and we will be approving some policies this evening. The superintendent search committee has been working hard. The ad for and letter for our superintendent, our future superintendent should be posted. Either as we speak or in the next day or so. So that's exciting. We also, the community should be out on the lookout for ways, a couple of ways to get involved. There will be a community focus group on October tenth at seven P M. Location to be determined and that will be with Nezdaq, with Dr. Ken de Benedictus, who is leading our group from the firm Nezdaq. And this will be a chance for community members to help shape the candidate profile of our future leader. So it's a very important event and I really hope a lot of people will come out for that. There will also be a survey that will be sent out to the community through a variety of ways again in the coming weeks. That should go live in early October. What else for Victoria? Anything else I'm missing about the work we've been doing there?
No, I think you're right on.
Okay. And then one final update, the PTA, Ice Cream Social was a huge success. I have no idea. Did we get numbers on that Kathleen? But it was a lot. Yes, very exciting. So very excited to see those kind of things happening and the PTA still could use your help. So if you have some time on your hands, please sign up, even if you're just a member that helps them with their dues and everything else. So look to get involved. We're gonna have multiple opportunities coming up. I believe the Readathon is happening soon. And we have some other things on the, on the horizon. So looking forward to that. I think that's all my subcommittees that have updates.
Great. Jason?
I don't really know how to update my subcommittees because I'm what, Board of Selectmen? There's nothing really to report from Board of Selectmen based at school related. CIP, which we just came from, which is capital improvement projects. We're almost done wrapping up what will be presented to the Board of Selectmen. So that's just figuring out all the capital improvement needs from the different departments across the whole town, obviously the school. Amy and Roger both presented to the group, presented the schools project, the whole SAU's projects. But so as part of that was all the school building projects, all the facility projects. Doesn't commit to anything, but it just throws it out there so that the town is aware. And that's it. I mean, I'm doing budget that, but that isn't until November. So that's all I have.
Okay, I will talk about facilities, I believe. Everything else that I am a part of, both of you have spoken about. So our facilities in, inside our agenda, it was, I think it was page forty-eight of the agenda. We shared a back-to-school flyer and that flyer has been shared at a lot of different back-to-school events, which just gives people an update and provided a QR code for everyone to be able to stay abreast of the information. Also included in the packet were the slides that the Amherst Building and Grounds Committee presented at the JFAK meeting that was on Tuesday. That recording has been shared with the board and for anyone watching from home, that recording is available on the SAU thirty-nine YouTube page. I wanted to include those slides in here just so that we can all, you know, be kept very knowledgeable of things. That being said, it is still a work in progress and JFAK will be coming to the SAU meeting to give more, more of an official presentation. Additionally, I was at the Wilkins open house last night and handing out some of these flyers. And it was really great to talk to different members of the community who came up to look at the posters or just to take the flyers and have those moments of conversation. A lot of people still know that our facilities are on the horizon and are looking for ways to get involved. So it will be important for us, one way or another, to make sure that we're including those people. Additionally, as you'll see on those slides, so far Clark Wilkins is ranked as one A. And then anything that pertains to water with AMS is ranked one B. So the roof and those univentilators. They're both ranked one as they were both conveyed to be important. So, so that was the reason there. Any questions about facilities? I know you both have been deeply involved, so there shouldn't be too many questions. Okay, Terry has come online. So Terry, are you able to hear us?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and is it inconceivable that you could be here in attendance?
Yes, I am in Chicago right now, so I cannot physically be there, but I am alone and, and able to hear everything as of when I joined.
Okay, sounds good. We'll be turning the air off so that we can hear Terry a little bit better in the room. Terry, if you have any questions as we go through, you know, try to raise your hand, but if I don't catch you or Steve doesn't catch you on the screen, let us know, okay? Thanks. Also, I want to say thank you for including that extra information with the ventilators and kind of the difference between the roof and the ventilators and water in general in the packet. That was really helpful to, to help bring our attention to some of the differences. I thought that was really well done. Thank you. Great. So next up on our agenda is to discuss community communications. So this was something that we had as a board goal that we set last month. And so there's a couple of things to update. I'll give the update on that. On September twenty-sixth, we have a meeting planned for the Amherst Town Library in conjunction with the Sohegan Cooperative School Board. And we will have one member of the Amherst School Board in attendance just to be able to open conversation with the community. It will be a chance to drop in and ask a question, stay for a little while if you'd like. There's nothing to be presented at that meeting. It's just more of an opportunity that we're trying to reach out to the community in a casual way. I can schedule somebody now for that or I can send that out through email. I don't know if the, any three of you want to take that on?
So knowing that one more is coming, I'm happy to take either. I'm flexible, so whichever one works.
Okay, which date was it? We're looking at September twenty-sixth from six to eight P M at the library.
Do you wanna just give the other date so people know? September twenty-fourth date.
I'm not sure about it.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay, so Josh, I'm gonna give you that date for now. If anything comes up, make sure that we reach out to somebody else.
I can be an alternate.
Great, Jason's your alternate.
Perfect.
And then in the future, when we have these, you know, recurring events, we just wanna make sure that if somebody can't be there, that we tag in someone else, which our board has been wonderful with doing, so I hope we just continue to do that. And let's see, the second goal was our letter to the editor. Or was a piece of attaining our second goal was sending our letter to the editor, the Amherst Citizen, which has been done for the month of September. So hopefully the community has been able to reach out and find that. And then next up is the policy portion of this meeting, unless we have any questions before we move on.
I, I do, just because I know it came up in the facilities meeting. Was that last, was that just last night?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, I don't know. Should, I know we do the letter to the editor and the Amherst Citizen, and I don't know, this might not be appropriate, but I know somebody at that who was older said that the Amherst Citizen isn't something that he accesses anymore. He mentioned two other publications, The Telegraph and The Cabinet. Is that something, I mean, if it's the same document, is that something we should consider sending maybe to those if that's something that other, more residents might have access to?
Sure, I, I don't have.
Just a question.
Yep, I don't have any objection to that. Is there any reason that?
No, it came up at JFAK too. Those are both papers still.
Right.
This thing, so they committed to it at JFAK. But I think if we could send the same documents, you know, there's an Abby can get the context for you there, The Cabinet, The Telegraph, where we go, letters to the editor. I'll ask Abby to work on that and get address system.
Great. The other event that I forgot to mention, when I was discussing facilities, is the Wilkins Community Tour is gonna be on Saturday, the do we know what date that is? That's a twenty-fourth. That's the date we're talking about. Saturday, the twenty-fourth, it's gonna be from eight to nine A M and it is in conjunction between the Amherst School Board and the administration. So we're really excited to have the community come out and see the different challenges in the building and the ways that we're overcoming those. And sorry, Josh, that I didn't realize what you were talking about when you mentioned that date. I was like, I don't know. Okay, so then are we good to move on past communications? All right, and Josh, you are up with policy.
Yep, so we reviewed all of these policies as a first read at the SAU level a couple of weeks ago. So my suggestion to the group tonight is to go ahead and consider this a final read and then approve them tonight. If there are any policies listed here that people want to pull out and talk further about, I'm happy to do that. So I will go ahead and make the motion to approve all the policies as written as a final approval.
Is there a second?
I second. Okay, and so any discussion from anyone here or Terry online?
Looking for Terry, if she has anything. I would just want to mention that we did hear these at the SAU meeting. I feel that we had an adequate, I had an adequate amount of time to ask questions and look into them, so I feel comfortable with them. Terry, do you have anything to add?
Is there a problem that in the packet it says first read? For our packet, do we, we have to put them through us twice?
The only other thing I'll mention is there are some policies that are not here that we talked about. Those were Sohegan-specific policies. So we talk about them at the SAU level, but then they don't filter down here because they don't apply to us.
Do we have to do a separate vote to alter the agenda?
As long as, and the action item says final read.
Okay, we gotta do a roll call with Terry.
Yep. So seeing no further communication about that, we'll do a roll call vote. Terry, I'm gonna start with you.
Beam yes.
White yes.
Conklin yes.
Or E C S. So that's four zero and these are all moving along. Great. Hey, we are moving along in our, in our timeline here too. Next up is the board to receive an update from the Amherst Ways and Means Committee.
You wanna, you can borrow, yeah, you can borrow one of those bad boys if you want.
We need a bigger budget for microphones. No. Okay, so.
Afternoon, everyone. Evening, everyone. And thank you for this time. We had a discussion the other night. We wanted to come up with three questions or three topics, just to kinda share, discuss. The first was with respect to, and maybe you guys can't talk about it, but we have some questions for you to consider. Contract question. There was, there, there is a question we'll be looking for, and how much was paid out last year to staff retirement bonuses under fourteen point four?
Right, okay. Yeah, so it's Dwayne.
Put you on the spot.
Yeah, as we mentioned, we were gonna.
But it should be public.
Yeah, we can get that number. We're gonna try to use this time.
We won't have that tonight, top of my head, but we can totally get you that number.
Yeah, okay. And that's what we hope this time would be used for, because it's our first couple of months doing this. Thanks for the invitation. So as we talk in our committee, we don't expect to form a direct question and answer. If it turns out that'd be great, but we want to, at our meetings routinely have an output be about three topics that we then present to you all at this, at this meeting. So at this, at this meeting, these are the three, I'll go with the three first, if you don't mind. So one is the contract question. We have parts of that. One is on your enrollment projections for the district, this, this district. And one is for the, the new school costs. Do you wanna just take turns on these? I think you should ask all those in one voice, you know?
Okay, all right. Did we finish that? How much was paid out last year? I'm sorry, how much was paid out in an average year? And I guess, I don't know, what do we call an average year? Like some number of years, ten years maybe. Is fourteen point four being phased out? If so, what is the anticipated timeline and what might take its place? So if you can talk about those things?
It does make sense. I'm not sure that we're in the position to give too much information without, I'm not in the position to answer too much without knowing exactly what I'm able to say. So I'd love to come back to you guys with that.
Okay.
Yeah, we can dig in and get that response.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right, not a problem.
I just wanna add for all of our viewing fans that fourteen four referred to is this staff bonus that's given upon retirement. Right, so that's a one-time payment for staff leaving the district. Right, okay. All right, so we're done with that topic. That's our contract category. Right, so the next category is enrollment. We're wondering for a long-term view. Remember our statement from last time that Victoria read for us, like we're looking at value over time. And so we're wondering about enrollment and how that affects the other policies like the, you know, the curriculum, the strategy of education, the space requirement, all those kind of things. So specifically, we're looking for enrollment, how it projects over, say, ten years, whatever timeframe is appropriate. And then within that enrollment, are there breakdowns that are relevant? For example, is there an I E P projection growth or stability or decrease over some time period? And how does that affect space requirements, other kinds of things that affect the budget, like curriculum or other special services?
Do you wanna say anything on that or?
Do you have a copy of the Nezdaq report?
We just got it. We have a review as a committee.
All right, so that's the document that we're using for projections. We'll update that after October first and Nezdaq will do that every year for us.
Is the projections with respect to special ed included in that document?
And I've been doing this for over twenty years. I've never seen anyone be able to predict an I E P even trend or progression because by nature it is individualized. So there really isn't trends. There's, especially in the last few years because of COVID, it's very, it's so. I, I haven't seen anybody, I don't believe it exists, and I don't believe it would be fair to the process and to the sense to say that we can anticipate increase or decrease of identification with learning disabilities.
Okay, but isn't part of the plan, at least in the new building, to plan for more space for special services?
I'm planning for adequate space to meet our special services programmatic needs and prepare for our, our current, are we projecting population? Right now, we don't have adequate space. So yes, in the plan, as you saw today, we don't have adequate places to plan and build adequate space for special education program.
Okay. It seems hard to plan for your needs if you don't know what your I E P needs are.
So we're building program, we know our programs. We don't know the number of kids in the program.
Okay.
We know we have, we know we're gonna have programmatic needs.
Sure. Does, doesn't, does the number of, of students with various I E Ps, does that affect the number of classrooms? And like isolated classrooms from other, the classroom spaces, or does it affect total space needed? I mean, if we had the same number of students in the school, but the percentage of I E Ps went up, would that put more stress on the space resources as opposed to no children?
And it all depends on the nature of the identification. And so there are some that provide academic support and specialized instruction. There are some that provide a whole different, more restrictive environment. So the programmatic space is very specific on, on where we are with it. When we feel pretty confident we will have a certain segment of our population, will that double in size or go? I, I'm sure Meg would say that it over our, the programmatic needs at that level of, you know, least restrictive environment will be necessary. And it has been necessary for years. And sometimes, right, we went out of district and then we brought them back. So yes, I think we know that they're going to exist. The size of them, we're not sure. But the existence of the programs and specialized instruction necessary, we're very confident that we're going to. But there are some kids that require specialized instruction and also just academic support to access curriculum in the regular classroom. So that's the, that's the continuum of services. So we are planning for the continuum of services, including restrictive environments programmatic level as well as access to curriculum with academic support. And I believe that that planning is appropriate to meet the vast majority of kids on the continuum we would expect over the next number of years. The exact number of kids in the program, I can't tell you, but the continuum of kids, we're pretty confident that we're meeting those needs.
So under what circumstances might we consider going back to out-of-district services?
So we go out of district when we can't meet the needs and we need even a more restrictive environment at a program level. And that is an I E P team decision, so the team evaluates. This year, I was privileged enough to join the team that had that as a discussion on whether or not we can meet those needs. The academic goals, I'm sorry, the goals in the I E P in our school. When, and the team decided it was not possible, so then you go out of district. But if we didn't have the programs, that our ability to meet those needs would be much fewer and the cost would be extraordinarily exorbitant. But yes, there are times that even in, with the programmatic level of services we provide, we cannot meet the needs. And then the team decides we need a more restrictive environment to meet the goals in the I E P and we go out of district.
And if space was a problem or an issue, would that also be one of the contributing factors for going out of district?
It's not supposed to be. Legally, if you can provide it locally, you do it, because otherwise you could say, oh, it's discrimination. We're not providing access to a program in our school and based on disability, there's a little office in Concord that wouldn't feel very kindly to that.
But if you don't have the space.
Then we make the space.
I see, okay. Okay, is that a driver at all for the?
Hold on, hold on one moment. Terry just has her hand up, so I just wanna see if Terry has anything to chime in. Terry, do you have anything on this topic?
Yeah, I, I would, I would just really caution that when we come to special education, there's a lot of privacy that's around that. And so I, I get very uncomfortable that you're lumping in and you're wanting to know information about things that are very individual. We can't give a lot of identifying things and you're also kind of taking two separate, and I think Steve's been answering this nicely. There's a program and then there's kids that vary individually. Maybe they just need extra reading support. Maybe they just need extra time to take tests. And so you could have a hundred I E Ps, but does that mean that you have all of those children needing special space requirements? Absolutely not. But you can't know what those requirements are in their I E Ps without knowing more details and we can't give you those and I'm sorry, that's a privacy issue. And so just getting that general number isn't gonna do much good. And so what you're really trying to say is what, what high-needs special education do you have? And again, they have a right to privacy on those things. And so we have to be very careful in sharing that information. And so I understand why you're asking, but be aware that there's not a whole lot that we can tell you without violating privacy. And so I'm, I'm uncomfortable even talking too much about this, right? Because we're gonna give all the kids what they need, when they need, and we can't predict what kids will need. And so we can be prepared, we can have good programming, we can have the right teachers with the right talents and skillset. And we can do things individually, but really eventually as an SAU, we're actually trying to have and we can do things individually, but really eventually, as an SAU, we're actually trying to have all kids with an individual learning plan to some degree. That's one of our goals as an SAU. And so to simply say, hey, who has an IEP? It, again, I understand why you're asking, but I, I don't think you're gonna get what you are trying to get from this.
Thank you, Terry.
I just want to be clear.
Yeah.
That when you talked to, I wonder, when you looked at a projection, when you asked the question right after the NESTE report, I thought you were asking for a projection of number of students who qualify for services.
Right.
And I apologize, because that, that is not possible, but it is possible to plan programmatically for kids on a continuum of service that we have experience with over time. And that's what we're doing. So I, I think I went to the wrong place, and I apologize.
No, 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 it's okay.
Never, I did, I've never seen a NESTE report include a projection of the number of kids identified.
No, of course.
And that we can't plan for, and that's, that's what I was speaking to. But yes, we can plan for and are planning for a continuum of services with programs of experience based on kids that we've seen for a significant number of time. And the number of kids in the program or how we can personalize will vary. But yes, the, the, the building project is supporting adequate space to meet the educational needs of all our students. And I apologize for that first.
That, yeah, so, uh, and I appreciate the need for, uh, confidentiality. The information I'm asking, because there's a need of confidentiality, doesn't mean don't ask the question, because this is still, you're still asking the community to support the direction that you want to take the SAU. So, um, there are some general questions that we could answer, and if you're not comfortable answering the questions, then that's understood, too. Um, but, but there are questions out there that, uh, need to be answered.
Yeah, I think, I think Terry, when you re-characterized our question, I don't think that was fair when you said the simplistic version of who has an IEP or how many IEPs out there. That's not, not our question. I, I would like to make that clear, that we're asking is, uh, a financial effect, uh, based on these projections. If you're projecting a total number of students, and if you're assuming that, what, what is your assumptions for how many classrooms we need? If, if you're assuming no children are going to have individual, uh, needs outside of, if, if a class has twenty-one kids or twenty, twenty kids per class, and they're all in that class, and we have one teacher and one para for twenty kids, that's a different amount of financing to fund that kind of school than a school where the average school has twenty students on paper. One is pulled out for individual attention, four are pulled out for some other attention part-time during the day. That is now one teacher, three paras, a different, a different budget. So I'm wondering, when you talk about resources, whether it's, uh, labor projections or it's space projections, how, how are you projecting needing that space? If every child comes in, every student comes in next year with a plan that needs their own space, the school we have now, the school we have, you have dreamed up, probably won't suffice, right? There has to be some, you have to have some idea in your mind of how that's, how that's basically broken down to get good utilization. So I think our question is better asked as, how do you make those projections? We're not opining what they should be. We're wondering, we're trying to get into your head of how are you already deciding this is the right footprint school? This is the right labor size? That's, it's okay to answer it tonight. Does that help you understand?
Yes.
What our discussion was at Ways and Means?
Okay, does, and I, and I, again, I apologize.
No, it's okay. This is why we, it's better to have a discussion than just submit questions, and we really appreciate you giving us this time, because this just now was much more effective than just sending you an email or, or having.
And I'm sure we'll engage in some of these discussions in, in, with the Ways and Means Committee when we have our subcommittees and stuff, but I, I appreciate.
One thing, um, which doesn't explain the why of the size of the program, but the program is included, um, at jfac.sau39.org. It's under the recommendations and then elementary recommendations. It has the program sheet for the Amherst Elementary, um, project. And in there, it does have special service classroom, um, square footage broken down, but it does not tell you why, so.
Okay, so I guess the question, the underlying question is, why that square footage?
Sure.
Why not more? Why not less? And what, and my follow-up would be, what happens when that space is exceeded at the school? And that's kind of Dwayne's question. When, when do, what, what triggers a decision to change your policy of special services? In terms of, in, in.
Remember, it's regulated, it's regulated by statute.
Right.
Federal law and state law.
If we don't take federal funds, does that change that in some way? Is there, there's just nothing that would change that?
No.
So we have to keep building onto the new school?
Well, we have to build a school to meet.
There feel, it seems like there's some kind of limit without, there's usually there's some pushback on every.
Sure.
Every force.
But we, well, there is no, well, there is a team that discusses how to, to meet the needs and meets the, um, the goals in the IEP.
Okay.
That's what drives it. And there's administrator on that, there are parents on that, there's teachers on that. And it's not, the process isn't come in and, and, you know, it's to meet the needs of the child. It's not more than that. It's to meet the needs of the child, and the team decides it. And there's a, in a dispute resolution process if the school disagrees with the family, but it is a team process and design. Everybody has a voice around the table.
Thanks. One, one last question on this, at least I had.
I'm done.
Is with respect to special services. Is there, um, under what circumstances would we tuition in students with special services?
It's, it's a, it's a good question, uh, and I, I haven't researched this, and I wasn't, so, uh, so you can, once you get a, um, New Hampshire Department of Education-approved program. So it could be a language-based program. It could be an autism-based program. It could be a developmental delayed approved program. Once you have a state-approved program, and, and you have, um, the state usually approves you for the number of slots, the number of the students in that program. So if we built a program and there were open slots, many school districts look to see if neighboring school districts have a student with that profile who can come to that slot. But typically, it would only be if, if, if the board wants to entertain the acceptance of tuition students, but it would be based in a state-approved program that has open spots within our program, and then there is significant revenue that associates with that. So if you, if you have a state-approved program, like a life skills program, and this year we had six, and next year we have four, and there's approved for seven slots. It, and we have the infrastructure, instead of riffing or reducing, we may say to Merrimack, to Bedford, to Milford, we have slots. Meg, in, in my old life, it would go to a regional meeting and say, look, we have, there was one school district that had a, a program for deaf children, a state-approved program for deaf children, and it's hard to do a one, you know, a single program, so you could tuition them there. But it's, it's data for program that slots, it's an option. And really, it's, it's the will of the board. Do they want to entertain that? So the only time that I would do it, open spots in the board entertains that, and the revenue is not insignificant.
Okay, alright, good.
You guys.
Okay. We have a little more time?
No, I was just gonna say, do you have any other questions?
Yeah, the last topic, sorry. So we cut to a contract question and an enrollment question that was tied to the new school, I guess. The last topic is new school, which we broke out separately. Um, and then the other questions we've asked last time and, and last year, and I, again, don't expect a full answer, but we don't need to discuss if there's time limit here. But, um, our questions are, you know, what is the total cost of ownership over the lifetime of the school? Um, that includes building the school as well as maintaining the school, and, and how does that compare to the next best alternative? I know you had plans on JFAK, maybe called, pick the can or something like that last year. I don't know, renaming it into a nicer term this year. But what are the alternatives of maintaining a school constantly? Or, um, building a school out in five years from now or ten years from now? What, what are the, what, what in your view is the next best option to the proposed plan? So we can have some value judgment on what delivers the best, um, educational solution for the, uh, for the tax dollars?
Sure.
And, uh.
Can I answer that one?
Sure.
Touch base on it a little bit. Um, while it seems like it should be a very straightforward answer, at some point, it does become more clear. Um, at this point in time, certain materials and certain systems specifically have not been chosen. So, um, for example, if I said that my house needed a new roof, and I wasn't sure if I was going to do architectural shingles or the Tesla solar shingles, I wouldn't quite know where I was. But as time went on and as I did my research, I would be getting closer and closer to a cost. Maybe I would realize that I didn't really want the Tesla after I did a little bit more research or something. So if you apply that same concept, not the same breadth of, of, uh, cost, but if you apply the same concept to the school building project and the work that has been done previously, the costs are getting narrower. The amounts that you're looking for, the maintenance costs and things like that, were further away last year and harder to be able to predict. And as time is moving on, there are numbers that are getting closer that we will be able to share out if that's the decision that the board makes to move in that direction fully. Um, at this point, I don't have information that I can tell you right now, but we've written it down. We've talked about it throughout the last, you know, eight months or whatever it's been, um, since voting season, and, and we know the question is out there.
Great, that's, that's a lot better answer than we got last year. I really appreciate that. And that, that mindset you're taking, I think, I'll say for myself, that sounds like a good mindset. Just to put in, here's the, here's the upper bound and lower bound, what we're thinking, and there's upper bound for roofing, upper bound for painting, whatever that is, right? That's, that would be better than last year saying, we don't know, it's unknowable. You know, that, this is, this sounds better. So a lot of taxpayers directed it last year, so we have even the time now to get these better, better resolutions. So maybe we can have a better informed vote for next, next.
Sure, and if, if the wording wasn't correct on that last year, I think it's more of a wording conversation. Um, and while you all are, you know, are Ways and Means Committee, as a board, we really appreciate your input when you're going through these different things. So if there's things that we can do better, feel free to let us know.
Okay, um, I guess other, one more question, and I'll let Dwayne answer his marks, is what is the, what is the lifetime of the, if the new school was built, if it was funded this next March, and it started whenever construction was allowed, when would that school end its lifetime? Is that known?
We generally build, we, as in like the construction community that builds schools, not myself. We generally build schools with an idea that it should at least be a fifty-year building. Um, many systems fall in line of like a twenty to thirty-year system.
Yeah, yeah, and that's the number that I've heard, the, the architects, other people talk about, fifty-year building.
Thank you.
Yep.
Um, and I guess my last question is, um, this is a little bit nuanced, but what is the, what is the problem that is solved by this new school project that cannot be solved otherwise? So if you had a list of those kind of problems that we're trying to solve, if, and if someone in town came up with an innovative solution that would solve those problems without doing a new school, are you open to hearing about that and in what forum?
I, I don't have a direct answer to that. Do you?
Why, why is the school necessary?
Why is the school necessary? Anything else, I guess, is the question. What, 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 what unique, what unique, uh, what is unique about that solution to a problem that nothing else can fix, like?
Versus all the alternatives.
If the annex was available, other, other options.
I, I believe that the K two-five project is designed and educationally into provides an educational environment designed specifically for grade level in a safe environment. I don't think we have a safe environment. I don't think we have an environment that is designed specifically for the education of the grade level of students. I don't think we have a safe, comfortable, productive work environment. I don't think it's an efficient space. I don't think it's a quality space. I don't, I think the students of this community deserve better. And I don't believe there's another way to get, uh, six, starting soon to be nine hundred students in a designed educationally span, education design space. Now, if someone else has a better way to ensure that our teachers and our support staff and administration can work in a safe, high-ventilated, safe space, and our students go to school in a, a space designed specifically for their education, I'm in. But that's what, at the end of this project, you will have a building that where is safe for our students to learn and our teachers and our administration to work, designed specifically with education, those kids at that grade.
How do we measure that safety? How, how does, how does someone come up with another idea that provides just as much safety as that, that proposed idea?
So, uh, we know that there are, there are parents and students and teachers today working environment without air circulation. We know that. We know that there are spaces designed, current, they're used currently without, um, the, that where teachers and students are working and meeting in spaces that are not appropriate. We know that the educational system of two buildings is not efficient. We know that we have activities going next to learning, and we have limited access. So are there other ways to, I, you know, this has been going on for five years. There was two architects involved, two, you know, from the Valley Benson and Benwell, and they looked at this, and this is what they come up with, and both of them are reputable firms who've done this all over New Hampshire, um, in New England. From my standpoint, as a, as a, your interim superintendent, this is the best, most efficient way to improve the education working conditions of our students and our teachers.
Thanks.
Do you have any other questions?
Thank you for your time.
Thanks. I'm not fixed mindset. I'll listen to anything. I'm serious.
No, 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 we appreciate that. I know you mean it.
Next up on our agenda, we have resignations. Mr. Chamber.
We did. We have a resignation, I think it was in the cello card in the package, of a, uh, special education teacher at Amherst Middle School.
Do we need to be making a motion or anything?
It's, it's really nice to accept the resignation with regret and wish him well. A nice thing to do.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the resignation and, and obviously hope everything is okay and hope that they are happy with their future endeavors.
Yep.
Thank you, Jason. Alright, and that brings us to public input two of two.
Jason made the motion.
Oh, it's a motion, I'm sorry.
Isn't it?
Is it an actual motion? Okay.
Yeah, I mean it.
Josh, would you like to?
Second it.
Yes, I second the motion.
Okay, all those in favor? Terry, oh, sorry, Terry's not there, so let's do roll call. Terry?
Beam, yes.
Jason.
White, yes. Conklin, yes.
Free, yes. That seems very formal for, um, for wishing someone well, but I, I wish someone well. Yes. Um, so public input two of two. Seeing no one move into the microphone. I said public input two of two. That's okay.
Well, I know you're, I know you're engineering. Alright, Greg Fritz, Amherst. I know tonight you accepted a bunch of policies. I had the number ready. It was, um, EBCG?
Yep.
Um, I have my with public. Yeah, Greg Fritz, Amherst, nothing to do with the other guy. So I, tonight you said a bunch of policies, including EBCG, which had to do with, uh, superintendent having powers over infectious disease and these kinds of issues. And, um, you know, last month, we finally got rid of that other policy that, um, you know, has superintendent have powers over, you know, forced massing of teachers and students to attend public school. So I, given that those two happened once apart, it would be helpful that we clarified that EBCG, as accepted tonight, does not permit those powers that you rescinded last week, won't be used for those, those kinds of activities. Alright, thanks.
Any other members from the public? Okay, um, with that, we have a non-public session, so we will ask everyone to step out, um, for that. Can we get a motion to go into non-public?
Jason, we got it. I make a motion to go into non-public. I will second.
Great, um, roll call vote. Terry?
Beam, yes.
White, yes. Conklin, yes.
Free, yes.
The reason for non-public is RSA ninety-one, A three, uh, two.
C.
C. Sorry.
We're, it's reputation. Reputation, right. And, um, so we're gonna have to get Terry a different link.
Yeah.
Terry, we'll get you a different link.
Okay, are you gonna send it to me?
What's that?
Are you just gonna email it to me real quick?
We'll email it to you.
Okay.